All right, so we can line out within sixty days of the date of hire. And we want to line up the other and on an annual basis? Or you will leave that in?
No, because they need that for their license.
Yeah.
The license will be on the annual basis.
Upon the license per rule, annual. And on annual basis then. That stays in, Mr. Gorm?
That's staying. That's true. Because you, yes, that's been the practice. All you're doing is codifying the practice.
Okay. All right, so we're leaving. What's staying in at the end? After we go upon request of the police, the town clerk or the police department. And on, is that it? An annual basis then, I'm trying. I'm just wondering how the wording is going to be.
But often when they, if there's an issue that requires somebody to come in for the liquor control board, we need to have proof that they have servers that are tip certified.
Well, yeah, that'd be the request of the police or the court.
But we won't have that, so we're going to have to have that as a prerequisite before they come up before the board. Because that comes up a lot, you know, they're asked that question.
And they are.
When they get in trouble. So. Perhaps we should...
I would say when an incident happens, we're going to know whether they have proof that they're tip certified.
Because do they, but should we put anything in here that says they should have copies on the premises? Current copies, up-to-date current copies.
Yes. If you say that, I think that's normal.
I don't know.
Let me just...
Yes, please. Mr. President, please go.
I think if you just leave in "and" on an annual basis.
That's what I thought.
I think you're right.
Thank you.
Okay? And to address Councilwoman Carlson's concern, I think when you empower the clerk or the police department to ask at any time, that means you better be ready and you better have it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Just don't want to tamper the PD.
All right. Any public comment regarding this chapter 153? Any other comments from the public regarding the amendments that we have come up with? And I think, Mrs. George, do you want to go over them one more time? Have you got them?
I have a couple of questions.
Well, all right, let me ask, Mrs. George, do you have the recommended changes we have made on these four, five different sections? Okay.
Mr. Gorm's got it.
Okay. Mrs. Carlson, please.
Just a couple of things. Closing hours for shops. Shops is defined as liquor stores. What are shops?
Where do you read these shops?
I'm sorry, at the very top. 153-2. Closing hours for shops. Victroling house, tavern, bar, and...
I don't know the question, the answer to that. I don't know if shops applies. I mean, when we wrote this, it was about bars and...
Do we think we should define that as liquor stores?
Liquor stores.
Well, liquor stores are separate.
They are separate?
Yeah.
Okay, then we, I don't understand what shops is.
So this is class C then, unless you're talking about a smoke shop or something that serves alcohol, but...
Okay, the other thing is that now there is a saloon being advertised in District One.
I see.
And we've taken out the word "saloon," so perhaps we need to reinstate the word "saloon" because that's what it's being called.
It's kind of a dated term, but...
It's a dated term, but it's because they decorated and built it as a saloon and that's what it's being publicly advertised as.
Yeah, I think we were looking to strike it because we didn't think of it applied.
Right. So can we put that back in?
I have no issue with that. I think we can put that back in. Is that under state law? Is that allowed?
Make a big comment.
Saloon.
Where is the word "saloon"?
It was up top.
153-2.
It was...
It was struck, but I think we need to put it back in.
Shops.
Having no idea why it was taken out, I see no reason not to put it back in.
It sounded kind of archaic.
Put it in, "saloon." We go west and then come to...
And other places of resort, what does that mean?
That's from the previous, previous...
It's from the existing language.
But we don't know what that means.
All inclusive resort?
We wish. Okay, so it's there, but we just delete it because we don't know what it is.
Plus your commentary.
It could come, you never know, and could have a solar turbine behind it. Okay, the other question, okay, so 1A closing sounds reasonable. That is, that kind of follows the section eight. That all mostly follows state law, correct?
It has.
All right. And they vacate by 120. All right, that was, those are my questions, just trying to define where we were.
As was mentioned, there is that other saloon in that first paragraph.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
Couple of them, Gorm. So what do you tell you, the saloon was stricken, then it has to be added back?
Yeah. And also, where do private clubs fall? Club jokes?
Well, I think anything with a liquor license, it's class C, it's covered.
It's a different license.
It's a different, okay.
So if they have a different license, it's not C?
Okay.
Okay.
Although, there's, you've got something in here that says including the holders of a liquor license, which, which would be a class D as well, would it not?
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering where the D fall. It's kind of generic over there.
As asked, can we add X, D, and L?
Yeah, I mean, including, yeah, including the holders of a liquor license. I mean, a lot, a lot of the private clubs are out competing with, you know, full, you know, full class B businesses up there, you know.
But the, this section 153-2 pertains only to the closing hours for vitroling house, tavern, bars, or saloons.
Oh, does it have the...
I don't think there's any question.
Okay.
Their licenses are pretty, depending on what they can do.
All right, I think we've asked the public a few times, so with these stated amendments throughout the two different pages, do I have a motion to accept the changes in the ordinance, I guess? Is that how it goes, Mr. Gorm? Is that...
Yes.
All right.
As amended.
As amended, as I said a couple of times. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second. Are we all sitting?
All in favor of discussion. Hold on just a minute. All right, I'm sorry. Discussion, more discussion.
Exactly, now you've got that. We didn't make any changes to section G. That was, we're going to start again with business owners ensuring the legality of that.
I don't plan to approve that.
First of all, before I was calling, thank you for making the other changes, but I still think that that is, that's too restrictive. Again, it places a lot of pressure on business owners and it just shows us that, you know, we're still business unfriendly by putting that in there, so.
Okay.
Well, I think the issue is, though, we're talking about alcohol-related instances, perhaps, probably, more than likely, in the parking lot, and I, and I think that, you know, it's just like you're down, you're supposed to cut somebody off when they've had too much and not serve them anymore. I think this relates back to they're not coming out of church, they're coming out of a bar. And I think that is the responsibility.
Well, what if they were congregating in the parking lot after church? Wouldn't be, wouldn't make any...
I hope they're not drunk.
It wouldn't make any difference. They'd have to be drunk. It's nothing they're about being drunk on.
All right, any other comments of the council? We had a motion and a second, and we understand the objection, Mr. Boss in here, and any other comments?
Yeah, concerning G. Concerning G, G, you did say that the police department uses discretion, obviously, when not every flight gets ever brought in. I have a little bit of concern about it, but if you're comfortable with it, I mean, so am I, I just don't, you know, you're saying that there are a lot of places that we're never even aware of.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we enforce in parking lots and bars that don't ever get dropped to our house. And I would say, you know, we're not, the business owners are, you know, worried about us being overly, you know, aggressive with the ordinance. I mean, I would welcome them to come and see me. And, you know, we want to be business friendly, but we do want this to mirror state law.
I mean, you see it like in progress all the time, you know, there's a stabbing. Luckily, we don't have much added on here, but, you know, the shooting or stabbing automatically, the business, you know, licenses revoke his clothes, and, you know, even that, I have some issues with, you know, a gang coming out, you know, on the neighborhoods, holding the business owner responsible for it. But if you're saying that police use judgment, you're comfortable with it, so am I, I mean...
I think it's a large part of how, you know, when we go into a business like that, whether we feel that the employees are cooperating, whether we feel the business owners are cooperating. Usually, we don't talk to business owners, you know, at the on-site, but if we find that there's, you know, that people didn't call, that they, you know, this is happening frequently, I think it's discretionary. But again, I think it mirrors the state law. We could bring it before council just based on the state law.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Right, we got a motion and a second. And I think we made a lot of good changes. To clarify, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with G myself, so. You got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we're on to the next one. Number three, Chapter 89, which is pages 79 through 82. Comments, questions? Is public hearing still open?
We'll read it a little bit as well.
Yeah, we'll clarify it. Mr. Gorm or Cheryl, this is...
This, I would say that this, this is an amendment to Chapter 89, which also pertains to the licensing of liquor establishments. This is a little more generic in nature. It just codifies the powers of the local liquor licensing board, which is the town council and a commentary. That's section 89-9. 89-10 requires the reporting of violations. 89-11 requires, it gives the, excuse me, the liquor licensing board the power to suspend for 72 hours, but no more.
And 89-2 also in the beginning.
Excuse me. Right, I skipped over that because it's a minor amendment that the council can waive the current, just put the highlights.
But it changes having public events on town property.
Okay, all right.
Whether across the street.
Sure. This, this allows for the town council to waive the current prohibition on allowing the service of alcohol on town property.
So if somebody wanted, so if someone wanted to rent the community center like they used to do and for a fundraiser or serve alcohol, get a one-day license.
I apologize, Member Carlson, that's not...
I don't think any of you is a problem.
You're right. And then 89-11, as I said, was, it goes through the process and the length by, for which licenses can be suspended. And then the last section, which is 89-12, addresses, but it essentially codifies the fine schedule for violations, making distinctions between first, second, and third violations and graduating the amount of penalties upward with each violation, increasing the violation upward with each, with each offense. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. That's been clarified now on all these additions and changes recommended by our police chief and our assistant council solicitor regarding Chapter 89. So any comments, questions? Do you have, yeah, I asked public, of course, public hearing too. Any questions, any comments of public regarding this matter? Yes, okay.
There's just a spelling error on page 82.
Nancy.
If you could come up here.
I sure can.
Eighty, eighty-two?
Nancy Sullivan, Sixth Way Oak Court. Yep, on page 82, C minimum penalties, the second, number two, mandatory minimum fine of $300. At least that's what's on the Secretary of State website. I don't know if I have it adapted. Yep, a minimum fine, it should be fined.
Oh, at the end, I got you, all right. Thank you.
Kind of a little.
Yes, it is, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, comments from the council? Yes, this is Bacon.
Hi, again, I just want to, I discussed this last month. I would like, under 89-12 violation and penalties, the last sentence I would like to have stricken, remove it completely. The local liquor licensing board may, in its sole discretion, request a donation to be made to a nonprofit substance abuse or alcohol abuse prevention organization as a payment in lieu of fine. I'd like to see that stricken. I'd like them to come before our liquor control board, and we have some fines under C. I would like that. I just don't want to see all of a sudden, they're coming before us, especially since, as the chief has stated, a lot does not come before us. So if we've got things coming before us, then it's a pretty serious issue. And given the fact that this is a public safety issue, if we have over-serving, if there are fights breaking out, if these folks are staying in after hours, this is a serious issue as...
Serving minors.
Serving minors. So I would like to see that there's just not a, that future councils or even this council that we would just say, oh, you know, nothing's going to happen to you. I think it's a level playing field for all of the businesses, so they know before they come before us, this is what the penalties are, this is what's going to happen. It just makes it a level playing field for all.
Can I say something on that? I'm reading it as, they still have to appear in front of us, they're still going to get the same fine, it's just a sole discretion of the council, whether it goes into our general fund or whether it gets paid to a Mothers Against Drugs driver or whatever, you know. So you still have the same fines, the same everything, they have to appear in front of us. It's just, I think it's good that it's our discretion, and we want to tell them where the money goes, they're still getting fined.
But I don't, I don't think, I just, I suppose they say, let's go and give it to another organization.
They have to do it, we tell them what to do. They have to appear in front of us and we tell them the penalty, where it goes to get paid, or whether it gets paid to us or whatever.
Or as payment in lieu of fine. So this is going to say that there may not be, you know, in payment in lieu of fine. So, you know, would someone go, Nick, would that be any, because I spoke to the Colonel and Dave D'Agostino about it. I just want to make sure that if someone comes before council, that this language right here may waive them paying the fines that are listed under C. And then we're going to, and then it's also picking and choosing who's going to decide what organization is going to...
It's just cleaner to take that out and let it go to town.
First, I agree with Member McGee's reading of it. I believe he is correct. Councilmember McGee, it's, it's not in any way to excuse the payment of a fine. What it says is that it can be paid in lieu of a fine to a nonprofit and so forth of the council's choosing. I think the only, what I think someone might ask might be, does this mean that it's not cumulative under the schedule? And I think the answer to that is also no, as long as the council says so. So they, the council could say, you know what, we're going to let them make a payment to Mothers Against Drug Driving, but this, but you can put right in your decision that this, this still will count as a fine under the schedule for cumulative punishment as set forth in section C. You can do that on a case-by-case basis.
But that's what I'm saying, you could get someone who comes before us, and if they're giving it, say, to Mothers Against Drug Driving, and they decide this is not going to be a fine, that the council would have that discretion, correct?
Yeah, they would have the discretion to say...
And I think that's a slippery slope.
But I think they all, well, that, they always have the discretion to say that it's not a fine, by just not requiring them to pay a fine.
Well, here you can, no, because under C, they will have, they will have penalties, or they could have, later on, they could have suspension. So I want to make it where it is, there's, they're coming before us, if they're coming before us, it's a serious matter. We should take this seriously. This is public safety here. And, you know, all of a sudden, we're, you know, we have our police officers, they're bringing this forward, and we have someone on the council, and they just go, oh, no, we don't have to, this isn't going to be a fine, and they're coming before us and they're constantly not getting paid.
No, you're right, it says, except for a payment in lieu of fine, no penalty imposed hereunder shall be less than. Okay, so they could make it less than, but I think they could...
They could, like, pay in the fine to a particular agency.
Why not just remove it all? It would make it much cleaner and much easier.
Things discretion for the council to go around where they want.
Why couldn't you...
Well, I think what you really want to focus on then is this. I would, why don't you just focus on whether in section C, the words "except for a payment in lieu of fine."
See here.
See, on page 89-7 or page 82 of 134.
Yeah, what are you suggesting?
What I'm suggesting is, to really address Member Bacon's concern, minimum penalties, I would take out the following words, except for a payment in lieu of fine.
Yeah, I had that also, we hadn't gotten that for you.
All right, so I think that's the more important part to take out, because then if, if they're paying a penalty in lieu of, they're paying, they're making a payment to a nonprofit in lieu of a fine, it has to be the same amount.
Okay, I understand too. I think, is everybody okay with just taking that part out on C? Minimum penalties, and I'll just start off, no penalty, right?
Right.
That's how it comes.
Or you could put no penalty or payment in lieu. I'm sorry.
No, it is. Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I mean...
No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
What, if you, if you put in, in payment of lieu, it's straight, that's it. It says, no penalty or payment in lieu imposed hereunder shall be less than. So the payment in lieu cannot possibly be a loophole at that point, because it has to be equal to the minimum fine schedule.
Well, why not just, I mean, why not just stricken that? In that way, I mean, we have a strike. We have our police department going out there, why not have it come to the town? Why would we be giving it to cer, and what kind of nonprofits would we be giving this to? I mean, now you've just opened your door, what are we going to give it to?
Well, that's up to the council.
Exactly. And suppose it's going, I mean, I, there's all sorts of nonprofits out there.
I think what they're trying to...
There's a lot of nonprofits that don't spend their money well.
What they're perhaps trying to emulate here is, for example, when you are, when you're trying to avoid a conviction in the court system, you make a, a payment to the victim's crime indemnity fund instead of making it pay as a fine. And that way, you avoid a record as a criminal, because it's not considered a conviction. But here, it's a distinction without a difference, because if you, if you're in the graduated schedule, whether you earmark it as a fine or as a payment in lieu of fine, you're still on the schedule, and the fine has the same impact on the affected party. They have to pay it. And they have to pay the specified amount. So, you know, it's a judgment call, really. There's no legal issue here, really. It's a judgment call by the council.
Well, right now, we have the change on C. I believe, I think we're all in agreement with, that, as you mentioned, Mr. Gorm, if you just strike the except for a payment in lieu of fine, it would just read no penalty or, and you suggested or payment in lieu...
Yes.
...of fine imposed hereunder shall be less than.
Yes.
That, that covers both, if there ever is a new, a fine decision made, and it would be the same, same amount.
And then at that point, the only option you're giving the council is to direct the funds to a nonprofit instead of the town.
If it doesn't go to the town.
That's really how we affect it, I think.
That would only, once upon a time, otherwise, the town needs the money.
Can we, can we continue with C?
Yes, I mean, we're in the public comment.
Thank you.
We're right ahead.
I would like to change the monetary amounts in one, two, and three. First offense, $500. Second offense, $750. Third offense, $1,000. And given the fact that, like I said, if they're coming before us, this is a serious issue, and I think we need to take this seriously in the town, that we're not going to put up with that, we're not going to put up with underage drinking, where, I, I mean, in $500, I mean, if you, Colonel, what is it if speeding ticket, running a stop sign?
You know, it depends, but it can be up, up to $200 to $500, I think.
Exactly, I mean, and that's just...
Minimum penalties vary.
Motor vehicle. So I mean, this is, this is, again, public safety, and this is only going to affect a business that is not following the laws of our town, the state and the town. So, I mean, the average business is probably never even encounters the police or would ever come before us. I think this would make a strong message, and I don't think that people would come back again.
I agree.
I mean, honestly, it's, and everyone coming before us is going to know exactly. It makes a very level playing field for everyone involved coming before us. All the businesses know exactly what the fine will be, and you know what? They may start paying attention, because they don't want to come before us. This would never affect anyone if they followed the laws. Just like speeding tickets, I mean, if you don't speed, you don't have to worry about it. But those, those are on the, on the books.
And having a, a business license and a liquor license is a privilege. It's not something that you are entitled to, you know, it's a privilege, and I don't think, you know, the majority of our businesses that have liquor licenses, you never see them and you don't even realize they're out there. If there's a few people that run into a problem, then maybe that first offense that really bites them, that's going to wake them up and they, they won't do it again. We've had repeaters in here. Make it effective, make it work, you know, make it strong enough that they won't want to come back.
I have a question.
So I agree with that.
If I may, Colonel, I'm sure you did some research on this, is this in line, the ones you presented to us, those 250, is that in line with what other towns charge or, and I'm not opposed to raising, raising the fine, but I am a little, this 36-month period, that's excessive. I mean, you know, 36 months, you, without a violation in 36 months is, is a lot. I mean, most of the time, everything else is here, you know, the traffic violations here, you clean, good, clean record, you know, I mean, are we in line with what most other towns?
I'm not sure about the fine schedule, you know, and I'm not opposed to a more stringent fine schedule. I, I don't think the PD would get into the purview of, you know, suggesting, and I had that come from the Attorney D'Agostino, because I think it's up to council to decide that. We want to make sure that the schedule is set and, and it's just, you know, easy to follow for the council. That was our original dictate, I guess, but to answer your question about the 36 months, I had one other business owner, through a representative, say that he felt that that was long too and suggested two years. I don't think, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable, if you want to make it shorter, but, because I think businesses that have issues will come before council, you know, inside of a year with multiple violations, so.
So are you saying from number two and number three, it would be dropped from 36 months to 24 months?
I don't know.
For a second offense?
For any of the offenses, you'd have to, you know, clear two years to start over, I guess, or three years under this, but...
So where it says 36 months now, we reduce that, is it? To 24 months?
I think that was suggested to...
I think for two, three, and 1D as well.
I think for two, three, and one or D as well, because it has thirty-six months there as well.
I know it does, yes.
What's your thought on that, from thirty-six to twenty-four? You know, with your background in law enforcement, what's your thought?
I'm just a, a person, again, I, I think what the chief says, if twenty-four months works better, then I'm okay with it.
I don't think it's an issue, like, to me, in my history with, with having handled these over the years as an officer, the occasional bar will get a bar, a strike against them, and then they, you know, hear from them for a little period.
Three months might be a long time, and they'll surface if they're bad apples.
Yeah, it'll surface, I believe, inside of twenty-four months, if it's a continued problem with the liquor schedule.
Yes, question or comment?
Nancy Sullivan, Sixth Way of Court. When you said it was going to be in just two, three, and D, I would suggest that you go back up to eighty-nine point dash twelve A, because about the seventh line down, it also refers to thirty-six successive months.
Yep, it does. So, if we're going to change everything to twenty-four months, that would be another change.
I don't have an issue with that. I think it gives a bar target to get anything off their record, if they're a longstanding business in town, and they have a violation or two.
So, that is eighty-nine dash twelve of section A, twenty-four months. Then we have, on the next page, C, we have, well, the changes have been striking, except for payment in lieu of, under minimum, minimum penalties, no penalty or payment in lieu of fine imposed hereunder shall be less than. And then, a suggestion has been to make the first offense five hundred, second offense a thousand.
No, seven fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven fifty, and then the third offense a thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have to change-
Then, yeah, D would have to change, wouldn't it? Thirty-six. Yes.
Don't end the fine on two, to say-
Yeah, take out the D on, on, on number two, we just make it fine and not fine the, the D. All right, so the amounts are seven, five hundred, ten fifty, and, and a thousand, which would help pay the cost of law enforcement.
Does, does the council want to make these fines mandatory? As this brought to my attention, that you might have a minimal infraction of the, of chapter one fifty-three, where the minimal fine is five hundred dollars for something small.
Yeah, mandatory, I mean, because like the chief said, if he brings anything to us, that's, that's a serious, a very serious issue, so, no, I think these should be mandatory.
Mandatory, mandatory.
And the other, the last thing on D, it says, shall be subject to a max, maximum fine of up to a thousand dollars. I'd like to say, be subject to a maximum fine of a thousand dollars, and not up to, take the up to out.
Okay, so you're striking up to? Because this would be maximum, which obviously should be as strong, as stronger than the minimum.
I think it's necessary, but yeah.
And then, do we want to add the three-day license suspension, or a five-day license suspension? Because we're already serious, right?
I think we already said seven to out.
License suspension, so after the thousand dollars, since this is within the twenty-four months?
I think the council can suspend the license at its discretion for as long as it wants.
Yeah, they got a-
So, eliminate the three-day.
Well, you could leave that, but, you know, in that final penalty phase, you could, you could-
Oh, you're talking about under D, uh, three?
A three-day use, I think.
Right, right now, it's this three-day, do you want to make it at our discretion?
I don't think that just starts a lot of arguments.
Well, can I ask a question about that?
Sure, public comment.
Yep. Kate Whittingham, five eighty-six Old Main Street. Half the discretion, isn't that going to seemingly may bring up favoritism to different-
That's why it should be in black and white, or red.
This kind of thing-
Yeah, well, we have mandatory, we're-
Just a question.
At the discretion, you have, right?
Yeah, we don't have mandatory.
Yes, I thought we were here.
You have what it says-
Number one is mandatory.
Oh, hang on.
It says, uh-
Number two is mandatory.
No penalty imposed hereunder shall be less than, so it's mandatory about the minimum amount.
Right, mandatory, mandatory, mandatory.
Right.
All right, just one, two, three, and then, what's the concern on D now, here, we're doing the twenty-four months?
On D, I'm thinking if we're going to go, okay, what, what I would like to see is a second or subsequent offense in a twenty-four month period shall be subject to a maximum of one thousand dollars and a five-day suspension for each separate violation, even if multiple violations occur on the same date or arise out of the same incident.
Because I agree, I don't like the, at the discretion, that puts us in public arguing with each other and about how many days suspension, which we've gone through before.
I think three to use.
Uh-huh. I think three.
Eighty-nine eleven allowed the council to do the nuclear option in any, in any capacity, yes.
I do, but-
Do you want to start voting on this?
I've got my, I haven't said anything yet.
Well, we, let me just, let's go to the D first.
If you want discretion, Mr. President, I'll say.
Uh, we, we changed the thirty-six months to twenty-four months, and we, we've took out the, the two words before a thousand, and it's a fine of a thousand for each separate violation. And, I don't know if we're going to add five-day suspension, but that was one comment made. And you have other comments to make as we proceed along here. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank the Colonel for doing a lot of work on here, but, with all due respect, our town charter says that all the powers of the town reside in the town council, not in the police department. Okay, so, what we're going to do, we're going to allow the police department to have discretion on what they're going to bring forward or not, but we're not going to allow, we're going to tie the hands of future councils to not have the discretion, to make the decision on, on certain things that come before us. And here, it states, as they said, there could be one mistake which happens in somewhere, which could have been completely out of the control of anybody, you know, on there, or, or any owner that says each separate violation-
Where are you?
Which Mrs. Carlson already ran, or, you know, already said, shall be considered-
Agreed. Good.
On page eighty, eighty-nine, twelve, okay, we're on, you know, where it states,
each separate violation of your order shall be considered a separate offense, even if multiple violations occur on the same date or arise out of the same incident. They could go, you know, with a mandatory fine there, they could go from one, two, three, to four, you know, to D, in, automatically, with a mandatory, as opposed to having the council, you know, decide whether that's, you know, whether it's a more, a powerful enough thing. It says right here that there are more dangerous categories of violations. Public safety violations are considered more serious than other ones. So, we're going to treat a violation of public safety the same as one for a regulatory, meaning, okay, jeez, I mean, you know, I had somebody sitting across the street and saw me close at two, after two o'clock, and they're, they're before us, and there it is, a mandatory thousand-dollar fine.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's lining up to try to, you know, try to do it.
Well, I don't think the police are sitting outside the businesses watching them walk out.
I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm saying here, I, you know, what we're doing here, we're tying the hands of future, of, of future councils to make a decision and to discern whether, whether it's it. Instead, what we're doing with, again, the police department is being allowed to discern what comes before us or not, but the county, by doing this, you're not allowing the council to decide whether we, whether, you know, whether it's worthy of that or not. I'm, I'm not for mandatory fines, I don't, I don't have a problem with suggested fines on there, but I still think all the powers of the town reside with the town council, and by doing this, you've, you've taken away that discernment. That's my piece. Let's hope it'll be four to one.
No, I, I mean-
We could, we could avoid all this discussion. We could prohibit the sale of alcohol in atomic oven treatment, that sounds good.
That's not it, that's not it.
That's, that, that sounds good, we could prohibit, inhibit everything.
That's a dog.
That, that's-
Let's do it.
That's not right. I mean, this is, what this is doing is giving a level playing field to all of the businesses, so when they come before us, they know that it's-
It was a change of policy which caused the stuff that's been going on, plain and simple.
A change of policy of what?
Change of policy of enforcement of certain things. That's what it was.
Certain, certain things of what?
Of ours, how did we get, you know, again, there's, there was something that happened there, it was a change of policy. You don't go for ten years and not have a liquor license violation, and all of a sudden, in a matter of months, you have, you know, three or four people, all of a sudden, come before us because they were there for a few minutes after two a.m.
Well, it certainly sounds like that there were issues when they came before us, so, and if the police are doing their job, that's what, they are there to enforce the laws.
They're doing their job to bring things to the council, to make a decision, and that's what our job is. And by putting these things in place to be mandatory, you've taken the power away from the town council by putting it in an order.
And to go and play favoritism to certain businesses that come, yes, because-
To discern.
No, they've come before us, and this person got a hundred-dollar fine, another one got a five hundred.
I haven't seen any council not follow the advice, when, when they, when the chief came and asked for something, it was done.
And that's why we have, we have drunk driving incidents, that's why we have underage, and what, I think we just had a young woman pulled over, or DUI at Taco Bell with kids in the car. I mean, come on.
Okay, okay, it's getting late, and I know we want to proudly move on, do we have other issues tonight? We're going to probably have to call for a vote, and I just want to know what we're calling for the vote. I, I know that one, on page, on page seventy-nine-
Karen had something to say before we vote.
All right, we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
I'm trying to clarify what we're going to vote on with, as we wait for Mrs. Carlson to make another comment or a comment. I know that we want to leave eighty-nine, two, with the red lines in there, as is. The council and the sole discussion may waive this prohibition upon request. Then we go to the page eighty-one, where eighty-nine, nine, eighty-nine, ten, eighty-nine, eleven, all the same, eighty-nine, twelve, it's been recommended that we move it to twenty-four months instead of thirty-six months. And then, on page eighty-two, we all, we've made some changes or recommendations that we take out on C, minimum penalties, we strike except for a payment in lieu of, and it begins with no penalty, and then we add or payment in lieu of fine imposed hereunder shall be less than. Then, number one, it's been recommended, or the vote, I guess, will be moving the mandatory minimum fine to five hundred dollars, the first offense. Second offense, moving it to seven fifty instead of three hundred, and taking out the D on fine. And then, on the, the third offense, moving it to twenty-four months instead of thirty-six, and making the fine one thousand dollars, instead of what had been there, four hundred, I guess. Uh, D also will be moving it to twenty-four months, instead of thirty-six months. And this is a maximum penalty. Where a second or third, or subsequent offense shall be subject to a maximum fine of a thousand dollars for each separate violation, even if multiple violations occur on the same day or arise out of the same incident. And that's how I have it. I know that it was talked about five-day license suspension, but I think I can slip without the five-day license. We could do, we could do that anyhow, if we wanted to. We don't have to have it mandatory.
I thought it was three days, wasn't it?
No, it, the one is three days. There is a three-day, that's on C three, a three-day license suspension.
Right.
But I'm talking about now on D. It's just simply a thousand dollars for each separate violation, and the twenty-four months instead of thirty-six.
Yep.
Okay, that's how I see it, and Mrs. Carlson, you have some other comments?
Just one, you know, I can appreciate what Mr. Lavassa, you're saying, but we are now sitting here as this council, in a year and a half, it'll change. It could change, it may not change, but it could change. Five years from now, it will change again. So I think if we put everything down in black and white, it makes it so much clearer, so much easier for future councils not to sit here and have to go through an hour and a half discussion when somebody comes before us or them, and, you know, it, it's, it's just really hard when it's at the discretion of. I don't think that works well. You don't know if somebody sitting on the council will have a good friend who owns a bar, and they want to have favoritism towards the fine or the, the violations. I think this just means a lot easier for everybody going forward.
Okay.
All right, it does.
It took-
All right, so, any public comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve chapter eighty-nine with the mentioned changes that I read, and I think Mrs. George has them.
So moved.
That's the motion, and-
Well, before you do it, I'd like to just-
Okay, let me give a second.
Second, please.
A second, okay, comments?
In the case that you step into, please, you want to make sure if you're fine with the changes that we've had. You have any problem with any of the changes?
I don't, I just, you know, social issues changed over the years. Twenty years ago, DUI wasn't as big as, as it is now, so, I mean, we, we, when we sat down with staff and Attorney D'Agostino, we wanted to make this ordinance mirror state, look at our neighbors and see if it's something that's similar, or not. I, I don't believe it's in any way overboard.
Because I believe the council needs to work closely with you.
I agree, and I would like, you know, we, we want council unified and given the path, so. I hope we at least got there somewhat.
So you're fine.
Well, I think we've made quite a few changes from what the chief had originally proposed with Mr. D'Agostino, so, I, I think it looks good right now. I know not everybody agrees, there's always different opinions, but we have a motion in, in a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed?
Neat.
Okay, I guess that's for one. All right, moving to the next one, number four, Mr. Waters. Did you discuss that one?
Yeah, what Solicitor Moore was passing out now is a copy of the tax stabilization agreement that was discussed in executive section. It is a two-year tax stabilization agreement, and the public hearing is required by state law. Also in your packets, page eighty-three, you have a resolution that will be read and voted on later. But the tax stabilization agreement for our, the town's new bioscience facility, it's a bioscience is a, excuse me, the, the name of the company is BioSciCometry. It's a incubator for biosciences and other startups in the town. I believe there's one startup in there that is looking to do indoor mushroom farming, as well as lettuce growing and other agriculture. They're also going to be the first location in the state to have commercialized wet lab space. Right now, all the wet lab space available is through educational institutions or government wet lab space. So this is a, a good little coup for the town, the fact that the business has also moved into the former G-Tech building along Main Street, not the one over by Center of Knowing One, but the one right down the street here, and they're occupying that building, which has been empty for a few years now. So the, the, again, the tax stabilization agreements- So the, again, the tax stabilization agreement provides for a two-year agreement, fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen, where the property will be taxed at the sales price of the property, $1.4 million versus the appraised value, excuse me, the assessed value, which is approximately a 50% discount, but not exactly. I have calculations, the town council would like to see them, that the finance director has drafted. It's approximately, over the two-year period, the town will forego $130,000 in revenue, tax revenue from this property. But it's my strong belief that the town will make up that forgone revenue with a prosperous, successful business. And what is now the abandoned facility.
Okay. I know we've been considering this for quite some time, and we all have the information in front of us. It is for just two years, and it is, I guess, taxing on the value that they paid or the price they paid. And the wording is all correct right here.
Yes.
We trust your legal abilities.
Mr. President, I may just maybe state to the taxpayers that prior to this stabilization agreement, we had many discussions about, we were receiving taxes on just a vacant building there. So that was the reason for making this two. And I believe it was for eight hundred thousand, if I might correct somewhere in that percentage. So it's, the taxpayers advantage to charge the sale price of the building. We, for several years, have just been receiving the minimum rate taxes on a vacant building. But also, I guess part of the discussion was that that we would probably pay that in our legal costs or the appeal, for the assessment appeals that would be going on. It would cost us more than that for the appeals in the court charges. The decision was made in that's interest. Obviously, the taxpayers want to make sure they know that.
Okay, and it makes complete sense what you both mentioned, and I think, I think we can live with this, and I think it's a good thing. It's showing the country is welcoming business, and we know that starting up sometimes takes a year or two, and that's all we're giving them. So any other comments of Mrs. Bacon, yep?
I mean, we're just getting this right now, so I haven't had time to read it. I'd actually, I'm just going through it really quickly. One of the discussions we did have was that they would be in here, the agreement with the school department, and what they were planning with the schools. I don't see, is that in here?
That's part of the tax stabilization agreement?
I thought that's what we agreed, that there would be something in there regarding this.
Exactly, especially with the...
Yes.
I think it was just general discussion, I don't think...
I thought, yeah.
I know that they're open to working with the schools.
And I think they will, yeah.
But I think that was one of the things that we agreed upon, that because they were going to be working with the schools, that there would be something in there that way that is part of this.
Well, I'm sure we could bring that up. I don't know if that would be timely enough. I don't know if they were to work with the schools to implement some sort of curriculum. By the time the curriculum got printed and everything got worked out, if the two years would have already been passed.
I think so too. I mean, they may not even get gullen for two years to, you know, hold them to the fire that they will be working with the schools. I know that their intention. I don't think personally it has any place in this agreement. Between them working for two years and our town, or town, our school superintendent, obviously, they're interested, and I think it'll happen, to require it to happen, I'm not for. So, point made. I don't recall, you know, mentioning that it would be in the agreement. I definitely don't remember that. So any other comments?
Well, I mean, we're just getting this right now.
Right.
And I'd like to be able to read this, we haven't read this document yet.
Yeah.
This portion of the meeting is just the public hearing?
Right.
Okay.
There's item under section C, number two, is the authorization. So if the council doesn't feel comfortable voting on it tonight, you can postpone letter C number two. But this is just the...
Right, just to answer any questions while... Okay.
Why is it in here twice?
Well, one, we gotta have the public hearing, then the other, the tax resolution.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any comments on the public hearing? Any comments at all? Okay. So regarding that, the public hearing, I guess, we can close all public hearings, correct?
Sure, there's public hearings.
Wait a second, okay? Those are the four items. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed regarding those four items. And we're moving right along, we're on to C now. We already covered...
We have to go on authorized with the town manager to sign.
That's a cover of later. Alright, that's where we're moving on, C. Alright, C is, we've already covered number one, when we pass the resolution for Tasha Fizier, tax assessor. And now we're on two, which is the possibility of a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the agreement. However, again, I'm open to comments from the council.
My only, my question was only because we had voted on one, two, and three, but we didn't vote on four, so obviously, it's coming again, that's unfair. I just don't know why we, you know...
Well, because we need a public hearing. The vote is come. That's why the resolution's there, right? Mr. Waters, is that?
Yes.
Mr. Gorm, that's why you went that way?
I have just a comment, if I could, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. McGee.
Is there a detrimental effect to us if we waited? Did you get a chance to read it? Is it a big deal whether we wait until next meeting? This is some interest in...
It's unnecessary, but my opinion, but let's wait till...
Yeah, I mean, if it's going to make...
If everybody feel good, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Mr. Greg, I promise that, we'll wait.
I mean, if it's nothing detrimental, then obviously...
If it's not detrimental, a couple more weeks to read through the agreement. Alright? And we all agree, we all, council members all got, we're out of this sorely needing good training, good educated positions, and we need it, and this will help do it. Are we all in agreement on that? That this will help do it, bring new jobs in, educated people.
Absolutely.
Alright.
I think it's a great thing, I just want to make sure we feel responsible.
I agree, that's great. We will wait on number two. Number three, we have now.
Do you need a motion table, huh?
Oh, do we need a motion table, or we just don't vote on it? Mr. Gorm?
You've had the public hearing.
Yes, we have.
So you can just table.
We don't have anything, so... Okay, number three. Mr. Waters. Mr. McGee still with us out there.
Number three is a resolution to approve the awarding of contract to...
One second. Second one.
For the repair of Upper Pond Dam. Per the consent judgment, it's authorizing expenditure of funds for 2014 judgment bond.
Okay.
And Mr. McGee will talk a little bit more about the bid and the bid process and the one calls you have to report in your packet.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. McGee.
Good evening.
Alright, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. This bid was long coming, we saved quite a bit of time for the engineering agenda. It was advertised, went up to bid. We received three bidders. The low bidder was found to be not qualified, and then responsive to requests from the engineering consultant and from my office to try to qualify him, and he would not answer the question we needed to. Unfortunately, the other two bidders that were there, their bids were too higher than what our best bid was for the project, so we disqualified all the bids. Contacted Fussin O'Neill, which is our consultant, that rewrote the specs, clarifying, making it a little more definitive rather than general. Sent out the amendment to the original bid contract to the three bidders and to all of the people that came...